Greetings, it's a special meeting. Refinization Commission. Think we probably. First, just go around. Some people under about.
Sir Vanessa Sate Economic Vitality Manager and Liaison to the LRC.
Corey Hoffman of Hoffman Parker Wilson Carberry Attorney for the LRC. Jeff Flutten.
Caleb Dickinson, I'm actually on the other seat and I'm the City Council.
Jeff Beatty Board Two, City Council.
Chris Lay, Mayor.
Dietrich Kepner Board Three.
Marty Glacius on the LRC.
Josh Cooperman.
Sam Fox.
Kathleen Kelly is the attorney.
Jenny Klein Interim City Clerk.
Susan Carroll, the Director.
Logan Johnson, Sustainability Specialist.
Hi y'all, Hannah Miller, Sustainability Manager.
Yes. Are there any public comments? Otherwise, say none. We have a staff presentation.
You do not actually have a staff presentation when we talk to the council as well as the LRC. The desire tonight was to be more of a collaborative conversation between the LRC and City Council. In your packet, we shared the 2025-2026 LRC work plan that was adopted in December of last year by the LRC. We have taken the feedback to do a two-year work plan for the LRC. Because a lot of their projects are real estate development and longer term. I felt it was, it showed a better runway with the LRC was working on to do it every two years instead of every one year. So we've included the 2025-2026 work plan if there are questions on what the LRC has identified as priorities for the next two years. But in preparation for this meeting as well, we talked to the LRC on where there might potentially be pain points in collaboration and cooperation between the LRC and City Council. So wanted to use this time to have that conversation on what everyone would like to see and how everyone could work together.
First, really appreciate that Corey is here.
Y'all are all on some shared text thread that I'm not involved in.
Yes.
And I was at the City Council, I was like.
I texted you, I'm so sorry.
That was okay. I was on time at Council meetings, but.
I am Cliff Harold. LRC. We're just.
Oh. Should I say Corey? Okay, hi, I'm Corey Williams, I am the LRC.
I'm going to do two things, one is just to express. Counsel and. Why did that? Tender. Out tonight is. You all. Second thing. That because. Stay at work.
Great, yeah, I think the, it's up behind the scenes, the preliminary conversations before this meeting. Very public have been great in the, in the sense that I think, you know, the, there is a shared purpose and vision between these two groups and they have their roles and they have different jobs and different ways and different ways of becoming part of their, their respective boards. But, but that, you know, we're all here to do the same thing, right? Which is to help the city of Louisville, you know, specifically in this, in this part of town. And that there are moments in which the relationship are awkward, you know, passing things back and forth. Or, you know, who gets final approval of what or where is the direction coming from or how much is needed? All those things that can happen lots of different boards, but the LRC being so special in its, you know, having its own funding mechanism. And, and so it's, it's different than any other board we've worked with. And, and so, you know, I think there's a lot of excitement about, you know, looking at how we currently operate with each other. And, you know, if there's a slightly tweaks we can, we can look at and I guess as Cliff said in our last meeting, not, not an expectation tonight that we're going to have pen to paper on what those changes are, but more like, what, what direction do we see these two entities going? And as, as, as most of us know, the funding mechanism, you know, runs out in 2032. It's most of that. 2032, but it continues on, the organization is continuing on past that in perpetuity. So this is a long-term relationship and there's really big things going on with front and center and, and the underpass and other, other aspects over these next few years and just trying to understand how we work together and what our rules are. And, you know, our, our attorney Corey's been really helpful in, in also kind of laying out the good and bad about the current situation. In that we can play by those rules or we can adjust those rules, we all have the power to do that. But generally speaking, the council empowers the LRC to do a specific task. And then the LRC's job is to, is to go ahead and carry that out. And we have put a lot of maybe extra burdens on our LRC that some other communities don't put on their LRCs or, or different oversight. And that might be how we want to continue, we might want to continue as, as we are, or we might want to look at some of that oversight. And similar, I like comparing it to the facade approval program. They have permission within that facade approval program to kind of do, to do what they see fit under that program because they ask permission to do that thing. Well, do they, do they have permission to just kind of do the work that is generally in the, in, in several language? So I think anyways, it's been a very productive conversation and exciting for these two bodies to get together today to suss out some of that and, and be honest about where there's conflict and where there isn't. And that's way to kind of move forward as a, as a unified, you know, group of people that are all, as I said at the very beginning, I think, all pushing in the same direction, just be, you know, helpful stewards of our, of our city and of our finances. And so I think it's a really exciting conversation, so that takes the groundwork.
Pretty good.
On how to proceed or just reflecting?
Either, either one.
Oh, I think that's a really good summary of what our hope is for our time together today and really just to connect and person. Have a conversation about how best to move forward because sitting on the LRC and having to go back and forth multiple times to get approval from the City Council can just make our process feel a lot more funky than it feels like it needs to be. And the fact that we work so closely with city staff, have an attorney assigned to us. And we have Caleb or a City Council member on our commission. It feels relatively safe to just give us the permission to move forward and go and do within the parameters. So from my perspective, I would love this meeting to serve as an opportunity for us to think about perhaps even getting closer to modifying the IGA so that it's less restrictive. Based on trust and, you know, we have guardrails in place on purpose. And just kind of get the pulse on where City Council is on that. Just kind of think about how best to move forward because all of our focus is now really on the vision and plan and putting the front stream and mainstream vision into play, so. My hope for.
In just some background for those that may not be as familiar with the LRC. We as a staff provide City Council with a draft budget of the LRC's budget by September of every year. LRC approves their budget, Council approves their budget, and then LRC has to approve it again. So that back and forth is common with any policy change or things like that. The IGA was amended in 23 to allow the LRC to like approve a grant if it's already within their budgeted amounts. So if they have a budgeted amounts for like their facade improvement programming and our property improvement programming, if they approve a grant that's already within aligned that budget, then they just approve it. But if they were to go out of budget or to make any budget amendment, again, it starts City Council, then the LRC, then City Council again.
One thing that surfaced. Turned it is, is just the way in which this from a process standpoint, the the LRC feels more like constrained, where, where are those constraints? Challenging or where, where can we, where can we improve? That in her.
I think that where I hear it the most is the process with applicants or, or different programs. I think to go to this. Wait to get on our agenda and then to get approval by Council and to contact us. So I'm, I'm here. The business community.
Corey. If you don't, if I could take a quick step back. And I will admit, and I'm going to kind of give you, you all the same spiel I gave to the LRC last week that I'm new to the party, so if there's, I, I understand there might be some history that I don't know about. But the statute for urban renewal contemplates that the job of the urban renewal authority is to implement the plan of Council. And when Council selects a body to be a separate urban renewal authority as opposed to Council acting as the authority. I think the goal is to create what I would call subject matter excellence. And so the idea is that a plan, the urban renewal plan is the document that Council or that the urban renewal authority implements on behalf of the Council. So it's supposed to be doing Council's work. And at the same time, perhaps if, if empowered, maybe advising Council on where new urban renewal authorities or areas could be created. Because the, the clock in an urban renewal authority, the TIF is collected for 25 years. But the area lasts forever. And it's intended to be the blight is an ongoing attempt to remediate and to look at new areas to prevent the spread of blight. But that's the goal of urban renewal. The agreement that's in place. There's two components that I would say are, if you were to look at the industry, if you will, and I represent about 15 urban renewal authorities across the state. There are provisions in the IGA that are, that are unique. The fact of taking, of getting budgetary approval from Council is unique. The Urban Renewal Authority is a separate governmental entity under Colorado law. It is subject to the Local Government Budget Act. And so the IGA puts an additional step on even the adoption of the budget. What Corey and Lexi mentioned about redevelopment agreements? The way the IGA is drafted, unless something is explicitly in the LRC budget, which has already been approved by Council. It has to first be approved by the LRC, then be approved by Council, then come back to the LRC for final approval. That's a three-month process in some cases because the LRC needs once a month. Highly unusual because the, the LRC has statutory authority to enter into agreements that are consistent with the urban renewal plan. And the urban renewal plan is the policy document that Council adopts that says to the LRC, go forth and do your work. And so, big picture. It is supposed to be a collaborative relationship. There is a term that has been used about, you know, what if an urban renewal authority goes rogue? And, and in, in 25 or 30 years, I've seen it happen in a couple of communities. But you know what, there is, there are mechanisms in place for Council if that were to happen. Because ultimately, the job of the urban renewal authority is to do, is to implement Council's policy. If the urban renewal authority isn't doing that, you have a much more fundamental structural problem in my view. And so I think what the urban renewal authority talked about, what the LRC talked about was this idea of the current IGA is more of an oversight document than it is a collaboration document. And so if Council was so inclined, I think the LRC certainly has suggestions on how the, the IGA could be streamlined that would make it more collaborative. And you know, if, if one of the goals of Council and the LRC, and this is a policy goal that is obviously up to the two bodies, is to be more efficient, responsive to the business community within the urban renewal authority, urban renewal area. Taking some of those steps out, so long as it's still consistent with Council's direction, would make the process more efficient.
There were two things that you said, you said.
I just showed you the.
And the chair.
It was.
He said that. I think that it's an oversight document. Collaboration document. Getting a budgetary. What other, well, are there, are there other things that?
I would say there's two other pieces in the IGA. One is, and I think it was alluded to, any proposed expenditure by the LRC which has not been previously approved as part of the LRC budget shall be, shall be subject to prior review and approval by Council.
So for example, we have to take a budget amendment forward to the LRC in April. And then Biden will be taking our budget amendment forward in May with the rest of the city's budget amendment. And then it has to go back to the LRC for final budget approval.
And then redevelopment agreements in general. Section 5D of the current agreement says essentially any redevelopment agreement has to go to Council in addition to the LRC. And oftentimes, if for example, there is a new proposed development that wants to seek a reimbursement from newly generated property tax improvement. That is a very typical type of urban renewal undertaking that would not, in most cases, require Council approval. But in Louisville, it does. And you're talking about net new revenue in those types of agreements where TIF would be generated from the redevelopment of a particular property or properties. It, it is, to use a word that was used earlier, one, to have to have that three-step process to do what is A, fairly typical type of agreement. And B, the type of agreement that really doesn't put anyone at risk. The only one at risk is the property owner because if TIF isn't generated from the redevelopment of the particular property, there's no money to be shared. So from a risk assessment perspective, there's very little risk. And, and I, I appreciate that what is probably most unique about the LRC that folks don't realize because it doesn't impose a tax, the LRC is not subject to tariff. That certainly makes it more efficient. But it could be the origin of some of the concern. But, you know, there is language in the IGA of bonds. I, I would think that that is the type of collaboration the city absolutely should be engaged in. So I'm not suggesting that is something that would be refined. But, but other agreements where there's no pledge of revenue other than net new revenue that is, at least should be consistent with the Council's plan, i.e. your renewal plan. Why not make it more streamlined?
And staff reviews all the applications that go in to any of the LRC programs, the same way we review Bath applications that get approved by the city. And so we are vet, vetting to a certain extent these applications before they come before the LRC to make sure that they're aligned with programs, to make sure they're aligned with the blight mitigation factors as well as a lot that there's, there's something to be able to give back to them because they're generating something.
Corey. How does the agreement deal with issues related to combination?
You know, I don't think, I don't, I think it's currently silent, but I would suggest this, that my advice to urban renewal authorities is that that's not a tool that frankly is good for urban renewal. The law was changed about 15 years ago to make it much more difficult for an urban renewal authority to condemn. And one of the ways in which it was made more difficult is you have to go back to Council and it's statute. So the fact that it doesn't reference it in any detail doesn't surprise me because A, it's not a tool that I would suggest should be used and B, if it were, the process is already in statute.
So pre 15 years ago, it would have been a tool that an urban renewal authority could use without City Council. Yes, so, so my recollection is going back many, many years back to the 90s when we established the.
2006.
90s or 2000s.
2006 is what your current. Although it was first the. It was a pretty, it was an authority established in the 70s.
Okay, well, I think the city got serious, it might have been in 2000, around 2006. I think what my recollection was is that this, we were a community of about 1,000 people. So, you know, we didn't have a lot of sophistication and this kind of stuff, but, you know, there was, I identified perhaps for urban renewal authority and some council members in the public wanted to have an urban authority. But, excuse me, they wanted the tools of an urban renewal authority, but they wanted garden. So City Council wanted to have the ability to use an urban renewal authority. They, you know, weren't yet comfortable with just setting those, you know, all kinds of things. So there was this, these kind of guardrails that were set in place. And generally, people felt pretty comfortable with them because the urban renewal authority could do it. And, and I'm not sure how much we won't do. Perhaps some tips or something like that, but. So that's how we got to this place. And then during subsequent City Councils, depending on personalities of those City Councils and the mayors, you know, even more gardeners were put in place, not because anything went wrong. It's just that it was kind of politicized to, you know, want more and more control. And I think, and I think that, for our core use, it is pretty funky. And it's not very effective to business community. It just, you know, drives them crazy just to ask for a small grant. Playing ping pong with City Council. And, and I can't remember when City Council and, and the LRC were ever in odds or the significant disagreement or anything. And I think perhaps we can streamline it a bit, I think the trust level is higher, I would assume, City Council. And, and also we have a member, appointed member of the LRC. Hey, I was in that role for several years. So I think it's probably time to take a, you know, kind of a fresh look at this, you know, different allocation responsibilities. Do something that's more typical. Now, the other thing I was going to mention, urban renewal authorities, you know, kind of going rogue, I remember back, and this may have been some back years ago when it was Boulder. But if you can understand this, and they, they were trying to redevelop West Room Shopping Center and they did go. And they were doing combinations and, you know, they were doing all these kind of things. And, and the problem for the City Council was when, you know, this stuff hit the paper. There wasn't a distinction between the urban renewal authority doing the stuff and the city of Boulder doing the stuff. And so there, there were some reputational issues that, you know, the City Council of Boulder had to deal with because people would just say, oh, we're doing these things, oh, these combinations, it's terrible. But, and maybe that's another reason, you know, we felt we needed some gardeners. So we didn't get urban authority doing things that were just, you know, been reputation harm the city. And one last, you know, we have parcel O, which is technically, it's been identified as urban renewal areas of proper.
Urban renewal area has an adopted plan, is not gathering, is not TIF generating.
Right, and I remember specifically, we thought it was the City Council at the time, we did not allow the urban renewal authority to go and muck around parcel A. We were really definitely afraid the urban renewal authority would do some things that would be harmful reputation to the city. And we didn't have as much confidence in that urban renewal or membership as we're actually today. So, you know, there were instances where, you know, we did put set limits in terms of the playfield that they could go. And now it's generally. So that's all history, I'm not sure it's helpful. That's how we got to.
That's it, so Corey, I appreciate you highlighting some of those features of this IGA that differs from others you've seen. And I think I mentioned at our last meeting that might be interesting to, to have a sort of a better sense of what a normal IGA, quote unquote, might look like. I don't know if you all have had, but I just wanted to thank you for that and reinforce that idea. But one thing you specifically mentioned was, was the bonding authority. Specifically the bonds for the streetscape plan and the underpass. And wondering if you can think out a little bit about, about the, the decisions, collaborative decision-making that we are facing specifically with the streetscape component of this bonding. Because we have a menu of, of, of options to, to finance. And limited, we have far fewer resources than we need to do even half of that menu. So there's going to be some difficult decision-making that may even extend beyond these two organizations. that may even extend beyond these two organizations, as well as the staff, the council, and the LRC. Can you, again, think out a little bit about how the LRC and staff and council will collaborate in this process of deciding what are those improvements? And how much can we really afford?
I really want to punt because most of that, because a lot of that question is frankly policy-oriented more than it is legal. But I will say this, that I still think the job of the urban renewal authority is to make sure that it is implementing the plan of council. And so to the extent that you're making decisions about how to allocate funds from the bonds related to the plan, the collaboration has to be there because ultimately the job is to deliver on council's vision. And should that be collaborative because you're the subject matter experts, absolutely. But I don't think a document can figure out those, that collaboration. That has to be somehow the two bodies, a mechanism for council to convey to the LRC. This is what we believe is important, and then the LRC to try to implement that with the funding that's available.
And I can speak to how we're hoping to implement that internally. Internally, we have a core project team that's comprised of myself, Public Works, Parks and Rec, Community Development. And then we have an external stakeholder engagement team that houses a lot of the entities that utilize where front and center is going to be going. And so as we get further into the project, we just got the consultant team on board. We do not have the contract manager on board yet. But the core team will be taking a look at it from, from my side, the business side, but also as your liaison. I've been hearing for over a year, right, what the priorities of this LRC are. So then as we get through design and construction, as we get through other feedback, I can help incorporate the feedback from the LRC. And then when there is a decision point to be made on like, hey, here are three options, and there will be some given, give and take on what the costs are or what to prioritize in those options, those options will come back to the LRC for direction on how to move forward.
So you're describing more or less a give and take rather than the council simply decides, council or staff decides, and then lets us know there is a give and take. With this menu of options.
That is our current.
What those priorities might be.
Correct.
I think, I think remembering that often, maybe often is not the right word, but at least sometimes the urban renewal authority is city council, right? So it's the same humans. So there's a separation of like, oh, well, we're using the CIP fund or we're using this other fund. We're using the LRC's fund, but we're all the same people making choice. And that, I think, when it's in that form, right, it's really easy. It's like, oh, well, how much do we have in that? We have eight million. Well, let's use that eight million, then we'll go on to something else. And when there is a separate entity that is the LRC, like, what? You're going to take all of our money? It's like, we're just using the money that's there, that's designed. So I think, I think there are these moments where, you know, the LRC, for good reason, kind of thinks of the money as theirs. And we want to program that, those dollars, and decide how we want to point that money. And sometimes city council is like, oh, cool, we have all this money, let's use it for some, some things. I'm remembering different, different examples. One that really comes to mind is during COVID, we had a grant program for small businesses that were injured during COVID. And we turned the LRC and like, well, will you fund the grants for the businesses that are in the URA? And then we'll fund the grants for ones out of the URA. It's like, well, so you're not going to do anything for downtown? Like, no, you can't do anything for anywhere but downtown. So you do the downtown, we'll do the other places. We're kind of like divide and conquer, and that's what we ended up doing. But there's a little bit of like, you're asking us, the LRC, to use our money to implement your plan that you're doing citywide. Shouldn't you just do it citywide and include the downtown area? And so I think, you know, again, if it was one entity, that's, that's sort of what we're thinking. Like, oh, we have some funds there that can only be used in this area, so let's do that. So I think when you have the two different entities, that relationship, it has to be communicated more around like, well, what's the joint strategy? How do we, how do we use these funds in good ways? Because this entity cannot help us, you know, in certain areas of town, but it can help us here. And I think the going rogue piece is, I think it's legit in that, you know, I think there's probably some fear, not really communicate, I haven't really heard from any of the council person. But I think inherently, there's, there's a fear that like, oh, wait, what are you doing without our permission? We're the city council, we're elected. What are you doing in the downtown? Like, we didn't even participate in that conversation. How could you possibly just go spend your money? I know it's your money, but just go spend your money on a downtown project that we didn't approve? We're city council. How do we answer to all the people about the project you're doing without? So it's like, we need to somehow collaborate, right? And so oversight is one way, right, is to have oversight over, you guys have, we have our ideas in LRC. We bring those ideas to council, council goes, like, your ideas, we go back to LRC, keep going, right? That's one way, or otherwise just more like genuine collaboration on what our shared goals are. And the conversation we had last week with, you know, the COP plan, conversation at LRC of like, yeah, how is the COP plan married to LRC's goals and plans like very well right now? So that's great. And so we're all seem to be rowing in the same direction, being collaborative. And yet we still have these oversight moments of having to go back and forth. So I say all that in that I think there is reason to have some checks and balances on each other, or at least council's mapping on the LRC around like, we can't just do anything you want to do without any collaboration and oversight. But we want to give you that general permission to do the work, to do the work of this part of town. And we trust you. So I, I think it's complicated. But I do think we have a great opportunity for streamlining and giving more freedom to the board that we appoint. As a reminder, like, we have total control in that we appoint these people. So giving, giving that body more control on a day-to-day basis. And then maintaining some level of oversight on, you know, whether it's threshold or your projects, or maybe kind of, you know, like, it seems a little, a little problematic to zero oversight, and we're just hoping for collaboration. So I find that to be, I don't know how to crack. And so hoping that other people can chime in on, on that balance of what we want to do, but not losing total control.
Just to follow up, I don't know if it's Corey or Dana, what, what response to your comment. But I've been out of town for most of the past couple of months. I don't know where the steering committee idea stands. But how does the steering committee fit into this collaboration?
One, we changed that name. That was, that was a terrible name.
The not steering committee.
Yes, the advisory.
So they said advisory committee will provide feedback to the internal staff team. The internal staff team will then take that feedback and come to these bodies with updates and decision-making points.
How often is it?
That's a little TBD at the moment. We wanted to give some time for the two new consultant teams to get on board. And so I think the intention is to start the conversations at the end of the month with this advisory committee. There was feedback, they want to be called steering committee. There's also feedback at one of the LRC meetings that the LRC did not want to be the ones receiving all of the feedback, but have this internal core team be receiving the feedback and then giving you the options to choose from. So the internal team is myself, Parks and Rec, Iris from Cultural Services, and obviously Public Works and Community Development. The steering committee or advisory committee. Has representatives from the street fair and representatives from the farmer's market. And I'm waiting on final confirmation, but we've asked people, we've asked businesses that front, on front, where a bulk of the construction will be, we have a restaurant, a retailer, and a professional services.
I have a question about really getting into the process related in this period of collaboration with council. Specifically with the vision plan, are we, how is this back and forth? Exactly in terms of collaboration? Like, we have an opportunity to have a discussion about like priorities, like, like in this format? Or is it that the information comes to council, there's a presentation need, I have a comment, and a discussion?
The way it's currently thought is once we have change points and we have options, it'll go to the LRC first. And then once we have that feedback and numbers are associated and stuff, we will present that update to city council.
Is there no opportunity for conversation? And then it will just be presentation and then?
Um, I think that's a little bit up in the air. It'd be more your time to continue to have conversations like this. I also don't know rules on like, I don't think we can, I don't know if we could take a vote with both bodies, right? If you're going to give us direction on what you preferred, right? Like, at some point, we will present options to like the LRC, and you'll have to be like, all right, well, our priority is A, B, and C. So we want option B.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it would work across this range, but I do feel like there would be that. Discussion once we get into making decisions and making decisions.
We can, we can definitely explore what options look like. Our current plan is to design for the whole project, knowing the whole project won't get funded at once.
Does he initially thought that there would be somebody from LRC?
Um, we can, we can explore that. I thought where we left it was you either rotated with, from the LRC standpoint, which raised flags on just continuity and feedback. And so we left it that I would just provide updates to you at every meeting on what's happened thus far. And then as we have decision points, we would actually come and present those decision points to you.
And just to clarify for the room, the point of this committee is to provide recommendations, but not, not a decision-making body.
They are not a decision-making body.
And I think, from my perspective, I think that's where our liaison. So Caleb's role will become critical in representing council on the LRC meeting. And should it come to a point where we need to send a representative to council and speak to an item? Figure that out. But I, I trust that we are all very capable humans who are used to collaborating. And I, I'm not worried about us going rogue. I'm not worried about us not implementing the vision of council. And to a certain extent, our path has been kind of decided for us. And we bonded for ten million dollars, and that's our budget. I mean, that's it. So along with the programs that we have established to support downtown businesses and mitigate flight, implementing this vision plan is our project for the next year. So I, I, and I feel like I have a decent relationship with my fellow commissioners. And that's the vibe that I think we bring and energy we bring to the table is really that collaborative spirit and, and the hope that it's met the same way from council.
Yeah, and one thing I just want to add is, of course, I, can I say liaise? I don't represent all of council, right? I'm one of seven. And so what I can do is communicate things that sort of understand on council, those things. And then obviously, council's its own body, I don't make it. So I don't make any decisions on behalf of council. I know you don't think I do. I just want to make sure that, clarify that, you know, I do understand that I have a limited role in my ability to kind of express intention and hopes and, and direction of council without, you know, falsely representing your seven. But, um, yeah, I think, I think the front and center project is a really good example of something that's big enough and long enough, important enough, that it's the kind of thing that, you know, we are very excited about. The advisory committee and staff really doing all the lifting. Once a month, LRC getting that information, making some decisions, and bringing a package as the, as the experts to council that says, look at all the great work we've done with residents, with staff, with ourselves. And this is the thing that we are excited about bringing forward is how much money we want to spend this period of time for these things. It might even come with a request of, and we'd love it if the city threw in two million of their own money for this. Like, it could look like anything. And council has to look at that much larger choice and say, wow, we love what you've done. We'd like to tinker on a couple of things. That's way different than, you know, Jasmine would like a new sidewalk and we've approved it. Council, what do you think about our approving of the, and then back? Like, that is very silly to me. But a big generational project like this, that makes sense. So that's kind of what I was leading to earlier is like, how do you put it in a document that says, oh, if it's big, okay? Pretend it's big, then it goes back and forth. If it's small, then it doesn't. I know that's doable, but that's part of how I'm pretending to know how to, like, how to get that level of detail.
And I wouldn't put it in that, frankly, because I think the statute already says what the urban renewal authority's job does in that context. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a worst-case scenario, just because, so that, from council's perspective. So you all know, I also represent cities who have urban renewal authority. So I'm also, you know, I, I, I wear that other hat as well in other communities. If something mattered to the city enough, and if thought the urban renewal authority was doing something that was inconsistent with, whether it's the vision plan document, the urban renewal plan document, council speaks through a resolution. If council passed a resolution that said, we believe X and direct the urban renewal authority to do X based on our interpretation of the plan. And urban renewal, the urban renewal authority doesn't do that, there's a process and statute to remove them. Now, would I ever suggest that's a good idea? Heck no. But, but the guardrails are already there in statute. So that's why I don't think you have to legislate cooperation and collaboration. But that, that's, that's a very aspirational view, perhaps based not knowing the history here. But it, but it works. And it doesn't matter in that context if your renewal authority is a separate body or the city council. Typically, separate bodies are created, as I said earlier, to create subject matter experts. But also frankly, because it's doing a lot of the work that in some communities, it's like, well, why are you picking winners and losers in the urban renewal contest? And a lot of communities say we'd rather have a separate body doing that, constrained by our plan. So we can simply say they are doing our work on our behalf, but they need the independence to do it.
I mean, it sounds, I agree with the idea of putting any more into the agreement than the. It sounds like there need places, there's substantive, you don't need. Tired, but that, that situation with those guardrails works as long as there's communication. And it seems to me that's, that's partly what you were talking about, is how, how is council going to communicate with the LRC, what's first. And, you know, on, on what types of issues? And if you're not going to legislate what the line is between them, how are you?
You've adopted urban renewal plan, you've adopted a vision plan. That is council speaking. And that is telling the urban renewal authority sort of its, its guardrails. And then, as I think Corey and Lexi both mentioned, and then trying to figure out how to create the collaboration within that, within that framework. And then, um, as I think Cory and Lexi both mentioned, and then trying to figure out how to create the collaboration within that, within that framework.
Um, I think there are options. We, we, like I said, we do have a council liaison on the LRC. Council will be getting updates about this project, whether it be from me, the LRC, or, you know, our public works team. And so, similarly to when like council gets updates about the comprehensive plan, they provide, you know, Jeff provides feedback on like, "Hey, I spoke to all the boards and commissions. This is what came out, this was highlighted." And so, as staff is doing a lot of that cross-communication, like, the end plan ends up having a lot of our boards and commissions' priorities and feedback in it anyway. Um, and then, outside of just the meetings where you are giving us feedbacks, you know, we have our sustainability team here as well. Your staff liaisons are bringing your feedback into meetings, even when you're not there, to highlight how, what the LRC's priorities are can be, you know, can impact the comprehensive plan or a sustainability plan, or whatever that looks like.
Yeah, I mean, that, that maybe is easy if I'm hearing it, is having Caleb report that. And, I mean, in addition to the reporting that's getting done, it's after, I mean, and there may be half of places. Oh, not well, but kind of like, well, you may say, well, you may say, if we had the back and forth all the time, you may say, well, council, but, that, you know, maybe it's time to have another meeting like this. With specific pieces. I mean, it sounds kind of like that's not, I mean, what do people think about that?
Does that sound like?
I, I, I think that may, I think that should be something we reserve as an option. Because we've spent, whatever, 18 months, maybe longer, counting subject matter expertise, if you will, on this project. Um, and we have a lot of thoughts about it. Um, we are not, I don't think, unanimous about the priorities among venue options in the vision plan as it stands today. I think there's some disagreement there, or at least different points of view. This is really complex. We have, you know, $14 million worth of ideas and, you know, probably eight or less million dollars to spend on. So something's gotta give, a lot has to give. So, I think as we go through this process, with advisory committee, our involvement, council's involvement, staff's involvement, seems to be likely that at some point, maybe next year or later this year, there will make sense to at least half the options to have a meeting like this, because it's complex, a lot of different points of view, a lot of different options.
It doesn't sound like things need necessarily be scheduled.
No, I'm just saying, reserve it, it's not exact as an option.
Current construction schedule, um, is planning a bulk of the construction in 2026.
Silence. Well, that's surprising. Beginning 2025.
Um, there is a 1A portion of it that is, um, a little bit less infrastructure-intensive. Um, that's currently planned to include some reworkings of parking and weight finding and signage that would be planned for after Street Fair, Farmer's Market this year. But the, uh, just from the time we need for design and everything else, the, um, and timing bonding, we would do bulk of the construction in 2026.
Like, sorry, like, January or like October? So, fall of 2026, after, interesting.
I'm sorry, I was under the understanding, and when Director Cowherd had come to us before, that this project was getting started fall of this year, not fall of next year.
There will be, there will be portions of the project that will be started and finished this year. Um, and then portions of the project that are start, started and finished in 2026.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that would be really great if, if I, like, even just a proposed timeline could be given to the members of the LRC, because it sounds like this might be information they haven't had yet either, with that level of specificity. Um, and maybe even to us, prepping the public, for one, is going to be huge. I think part of the conversation has been that this is starting this fall, to expect these changes on Front Street. Um, people are excited about it. I mean, they're invested in it, especially, you know, community members in the, in the Port One area that I've spoken to. I'd like to know too, like, when can we expect to have changes to our traffic and businesses and things like that? So, if this, if the plan has evolved, if there's a way to update every person in this room, but especially the LRC, so that that can be conveyed, I personally appreciate it.
Um, yeah, we could definitely do that and talk to rest of the project team. Um, some of the dates are still a little bit in flux, so that's why we speak
You know, that's good, right.
Themes of months, um, but we can.
Now we're speaking in terms of years, so.
When is the deliverable from the designated engineering consultants? When is that?
Um, we won't. We won't have the full design done for, and I'm looking at Rob for quite some time.
I would say this is pretty premature to dive into the details of this. I think we have one project needing with consultants, and then we have to hire a construction team as well. So I'd say all the things we want to talk about are being developed. And I think if we guess at what it's gonna be, we might be a little wrong. So I think we've heard you all want the information in a very formal way. And I think once we get all the right people at the table, we can develop a calendar of winter, the structure. You know, there's a lot that has to, like, a lot of surveying has to be done.
I'm shocked to hear 2025 is anything happening.
Right, right, so I think, I think there's, there's a lot of aspirations to get as much done in 25 as we can. We don't know what that is yet. I think there's a lot of guessing from engineering team, like, well, we think we can get this done if things go well. And I think that's a lot of what Vanessa's talking to, which has been internal conversations that haven't been formalized yet.
And our comms team is involved as well, to be able to share with y'all, but with businesses and residents, um, once we have something more concrete to tell them.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, like, we, we know that communication is vitally important. We know business impacts are gonna be just incredibly important for this to be successful. That, you know, that's why we have the advisory committee, because we'll only know so much, our consultants will only know so much. So, well, we're trying to do everything we can. Uh, and, you know, we, we hear that there's a need for a lot of that communication with the public, as well as both of these, you know, both city council and LRC.
I mean, that, that'll, that'll make sense. I mean, it sounds like it will reveal itself in the fullness of time. Right? Um, so it, you know, I, that, I mean, I don't, it doesn't sound like there's any particular disagreement around that. And I know that because I've heard the numbers of the LRC and certainly council manage the expectations, especially of businesses, and trying to mitigate some of adverse effects, because that's been, it's all great to think in a few years, you're gonna have a terrific product with this business as an existence, and we got one year of it driven out. That's not terrible. So, um, I wonder if we can come back, uh, for just, I mean, I, unless there's more to collaborative piece. It sounds like the structure of collaboration is something that we can work on as the conditions dictate. And it doesn't sound like that's something we have to birth or modify. I wanted to come back to the areas where maybe, I guess, a couple of, one was to come back to those areas talked about before and others. See, talked about. Uh, but also, I, I was gonna ask, maybe, just before we go into that part, are there, are there kinds of, um, I don't know, guardrails, I'd say? This is more capacious, sort of enabling provisions that we can put? Because, I mean, we've talked about collaboration, we've talked about oversight, but one of the things we haven't talked about is, you know, how we can, if there's anything we can do to add to this, things that everybody knows that LRC can jump into?
In a, I mean, I'll, I'll jump ahead and say, if, if I could get authority to go ahead and come up with, work with LRC to draft suggested revisions to the IGA, I'd love that takeaway from tonight. Um, one of the enabling pieces that I would encourage the LRC to consider is as subject matter experts, as if, if the LRC sees opportunities for new plan areas. Or what is often common is a developer comes to the city and says, "You know, I've got this huge gap and there's not enough tools in the toolbox." Bringing the LRC into that conversation about, you know, TIFF being one of those potential tools, with the understanding that if the city council considers a new plan area, it's gonna be subject to an expansion of the board under House Bill 1348. So we'd have to add four new members of the board. But the enabling piece I would encourage is giving the specific authorization to the subject matter experts as time allows, to recommend new plan areas to the city if, if the opportunity presents itself. Because ultimately, it's the city that makes those final decisions on both whether or not a particular property is blighted, which makes it eligible for an urban renewal plan area, and then ultimately adopting a plan.
So, Chris, I, I wonder, to the comp plan process, whether it would be related to that, that might be actionable or something that just the city takes over. I, I think you just, have you just had, just had? We, we had an overview of the comp plan. I, firstly, I didn't connect the dots between the comp plan process and perhaps looking at additional permanent opportunity. Is that something that is necessary to offer for council to offer, or for us to agree on?
Well, putting it.
Because I think that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, putting it in the agreement certainly gives, kind of gives the urban renewal authority the charge that we explicitly suggest that you, if, if the opportunity presents itself, this is something we would look to you towards. And to the interplay with the comp plan, anytime that an urban renewal authority, or anytime the city is looking at a new urban renewal area, part of the statutory process is it has to go to planning commission for conformance with the general plan of the municipal, which is the comp plan. So, kind of a chicken and egg, but conformance of the comp plan is built into the process for considering any urban renewal area.
So, does it need to get, does it need to find its way into that? Is it just already?
Well, there, there is a statutory provision that talks about, um, urban renewal authorities being authorized to assist in plans and new urban renewal plans. Putting it in the, in the cooperation agreement is a specific sort of charge to the LRC to say, "Yeah, this is something we'd like you to do." So I, I think it's helpful.
I mean, and I don't know what the timing is, but it is really timely to get any input that we're, that the LRC gives. Soon.
Well, and there, there are some, like, and I can let Rob speak to the comp plan inclusion, but if you decide, or whatever the combo of the body decides to move forward with a new urban renewal area, it'll have to go through an independent flight study, regardless of if it's included in something like the comp plan or not.
Yeah, no, I, and I, I understand that. I mean, I guess, uh, we're, we may, we, I may talk a bit. One, uh, talking about new urban renewal areas and the second, whatever connection that might have to the comp plan. It sounds like a little longer to think. And the other is whether there's a short piece that it's not so much you are a changing, but you're simply, maybe just the.
Well, and I think just to, just to clarify, say, you know, Cory will correct me, but I'm quite sure you don't have to put in your comp plan, you're gonna have to designate areas that you might in the future want to designate for urban renewal areas. So I think, you know, the comp plan's gonna have these preferred future scenarios for the city. And I think we can always throw a general policy in there that says that the city and the LRC can look to new urban renewal areas if they find that it's gonna be helpful to facilitate the plan. You just have that policy in there, and that could be probably more than enough to address the issue.
Yeah, definitely. And, and I would say that post 1348, it is more common to have smaller, almost property-specific urban renewal plan areas. And so, when I talk about developers coming to a community and kind of demonstrating there's a gap, it is, it is often driven on a much smaller level because of the way that, because of the involvement of the other taxing entities, and it really being more of a project-specific plan area. I mean, the, the current Louisville urban renewal plan is very typical for that timeframe in terms of being a larger plan area. That's definitely the exception today as opposed to the rule. And so, having that general language in the comp plan also tells developers that may want to approach the city that that tool is available.
I don't know, you know, on that, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick question, are there any kinds of restrictions on size or nature of a property that could be deemed that you were right?
Uh, the boundaries under the statute are supposed to be drawn as narrowly as feasible. That's the only direction, but, but practically speaking, now they're much more project-specific. But that's certainly more typical.
So, I'm just trying to, trying to pick up on some directional ideas that we might try and adopt or at least consider coming out of the meeting. I think one of them is we need to, to fix the minor budget amendment. That sounds like the fix that everybody's interested in, that we don't need to have a three-month process to this application. There needs to be whatever the correct words, the back of the name is to sort of designate major versus minor items, and the minor ones. Generally, there's no reason for that. Second piece, I think, is the yearly budget. Like, I for one, feel less certain that we want to keep that up. But certainly welcome to. What the yearly budget needs to cover, council. And the third one is downtown vision, and sort of what's our collaboration process going to be. And what I'm hearing is like, pretty much the, the options aren't limited. The IGA doesn't substantially limit our collaboration options. So maybe we need to consider more joint meetings or the ability to call joint meetings or what have you, certainly interested in those ideas. I'm not hearing that there needs to be an amendment, anything to, to get that cooperation done. Uh, then I, I guess the fourth one is the enabling language that the mayor was discussing, discussing around new plan areas and new chips and so on, which seems like the best practice and approach. So, am I sort of hitting on, for those four areas that we're trying to get this?
I think generally, we, I think we've, we've hit the, the process piece, which I think is easy to, you know, that's the one that, that's the fullness of time discussion. Um, I don't know that we need to, I think we have some understanding right now. I don't know if we need to formalize it anymore than we've just done. Um, the, the enabling language, I guess, is the question, or the, you know, I'm personally, I think that's a great idea. I guess, maybe it's good to find out. But the council members have any comment on that? Obviously, let me hear from the LRC too. And I don't know, Kathleen, would it be formal action on some of these or not?
No, I think direction would be sufficient.
Council can direct. Council can direct Corey.
Well, I mean.
LRC.
Right, but the purpose of this meeting, I think, is to provide some direction from. The collective two groups. And Corey is operating to the drafting, so I think it's fine. I don't need to take any formal action to put that ball in motion.
On the, on the enabling piece, how council members.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it sounds like it's sort of the best practice. I'm interested in having all the things available to us to encourage good development. So.
Right, if there are others to be considered, I think. See that that's a conversation. Other comments. Clarify what. I think we were talking about, well, one, we were talking about the possibility of the. Consideration of new. That was one of them.
It's the primary.
Does that help? Um, other thoughts? Thumbs up from council.
And I guess the process I'd suggest kind of based on what Kathleen mentioned is that I work with the LRC to come up with a proposed red line.
Yeah.
That explains the basis for the red lines.
Right.
So, so the council gets not only a red line, but the why.
Yeah.
Consistent with tonight. And then we have some back and forth.
I think that's, I think that's good. I, I think. But I was interested in, I think. Councilor Hefner's image is that we may, we may be able to be more specific. The. In the direction that. You might. About the budget, but I'm very interested. I mean, first, is, is the LRC comfortable? If. I just pointed out that at least in my view, within the current urban renewal authority. Boundaries, we have way more. Project specific taxing, revenue, banking, financing. Opportunities to partner with developers than we can. And you just think about that Main Street versus down Main Street. Um, we get our DC downtown Colorado week project, strategic plan, the catalyst sites that we talked about. I think it's, I think it's good to have more flexibility than less. I don't want to suggest that we don't have plenty of opportunities just in the current. But I like the idea of enabling. Language to broaden some of our thinking about what, what's possible.
That it's not mandatory.
No, that's why, exactly.
Yeah.
We have not had that conversation.
Hi.
Right.
It is on your work plan.
What?
Yeah, cause what we haven't yet, we haven't talked about it yet. Yeah.
I mean, I think this meeting is a smashing success. I think if the LRC, Corey. Goes over that documented red lights things and suggests that back to council, it comes to council, it counts as like, yes, no, great, otherwise. Great process. I think without this conversation. If that second thing happened, that wouldn't go well. It's like, oh, LRC is asked, you can redline all these things and change the rules and give us what it's like, what, what's going? And then, and it's a bit of a like, an attack on our oversight. But because we're having a conversation about what, how we want to collaborate, when that document comes back to council, it's not. Nowhere, right? It's, oh, great. This is kind of what we were all thinking about. This looks reasonable. We've had this conversation. This is great. Thanks for all this collaborative work. Let's move forward right there. So I think. I think for me, I think we've accomplished tonight, what I was hoping we could accomplish is being on the same page, understanding what our roles are. Trying to make it better, coming back with something that the LRC thinks is better and council will. You know, react to that, those changes and they're not going to be huge surprises, but you know, I think, I think we're, I think we're in a really good spot right now. Forward to it, you know?
One, I, I think that's a good. Summary. I, I think on the budget piece, um. That's, that's one area where. Maybe it would be good for the, the LRC to consider some options. When, when, you know, considering. Drafting of the. Superceding. That might be. Is it, you know, I, I share. I, I think it's really questionable. What, what more freedom do you need? What's? Let's talk. Probably have seven. Set a road. Um, I, I think we've hit on three of the.
Just want to say one, one more thing about budget, which is the way I like to think about it is the way we think about the rest of the city's budget, which is. We budget at the fund level and then what happens below the fund level can just happen and it doesn't have to come back to us. And so if we can do an annual LRC budget, that's essentially like top, top line, top level. Then what happens underneath that doesn't ever come back to us. Maybe we get notice if it's a minor amendment to the budget. Something like that, where it doesn't have to take the three month process. Uh, but if it felt sort of consistent with the way we do other budgeting, that might be nice.
Council members.
Just as some background, Rider is our, that are the most finance human.
Which one?
Driver, our finance.
Finance human. We need to note that for a change in the. Opposed to the others who are not. Um, so, uh, there was one other issue that you had raised before. I don't know.
It was, it was, it was just part of budget. So keep, keep the annual budgeting, but have some notion of a. Of a process to do essentially minor amendments to the budget or approvals or whatever needs to happen. With, without the three months, like, cause that's not effective. That's not. Just to walk.
We'll, we'll work on some, some different options though. One thing I'll point out so that councils will bear is that the LRC with or without counsel of the whole budget. Has to go through the entire statutory process. They have to have a public hearing to prove their budget. It is the only public hearing. That an urban renewal authority has under the law is statutory, is, is to adopt a budget. Unlike the city council that has public hearings on a lot of things, LRC is only the budget.
That's interesting.
So do you mind, I, I'm curious to find out from all of you, like what you thought of the public input process with the downtown vision plan, like kind of given that statement that you don't have to. Into a lot of this, you know, how did you feel about that? I mean, from what I've heard from a lot of residents, um, they loved. Knowing they liked being able to pick and choose things on board that they liked. And. I think a lot of people are looking forward to seeing if anything that they thought is what you thought and is part of that actual vision. Um, but I'd be curious to know how, if you felt it'd be cumbersome and, you know, uh, maybe like what you wanted more challenging or. Anybody can.
I'll speak from my perspective. I mean, I. To be clear, we are all volunteers on the LRC and we are here because we care about this community, because we are all. So we understand that our role is to do the best in the interest of our community, not our own personal interest or just the interest of. Table. Uh, so I take that community input process very seriously. And wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward on a huge project like this without that input. All of our meetings are open, uh, so anybody can come and like speak to, we have regulars who are always. Um, and it's great to hear from them because then it reassures us that we're not just sitting around chatting in an echo chamber, so to speak. So. Um, from my perspective, I feel much more confident moving forward with what is currently in the plan. And I think. You know, council has open, open meetings. We continue to have open meetings. This advisory committee will be there. So, so I'm hopeful that, that what gets implemented is representative of what the community wants. And it's our. Jobs, um, as commissioners to put that mission into place. That's, that's all I.
One thing I might want to kind of wrap up is for. Dinner, it's nice to. Own business. There, I just want to say, I think, I. Hearing certainly from council. There's a, there is a high degree of trust. Putting, we made the decision to. Various times. Chose to. I think that's an important. This process. I am also. Very pleased. But we. Work through some issues that we have. I haven't asked our own council, but she's got anything to add, but I suspect that. Is there, is there anything else before we? Oh, I mean, is the direction pretty clear? Does anybody have any other lingering shoes in one?
Alright. Then.
Right, right. This is going to be bold and.
All right, why don't we get going? Welcome. Why don't we start with our own staff? Our clerk. Ready? Who's yourself first?
Jenny Klein, Interim City Clerk. Hi, everyone. Hannah Miller, Sustainability Manager. Seth Lee, City Councilwoman.
Caleb Dickinson, City Councilman, Ward 1.
Josh Green, City Councilman, Ward 1. Former Sustainability Board Member.
Logan Johnson, Sustainability Specialist.
Dietrich Kepner, Ward 3.
Chris Lake.
Jeff Fagin, Ward 2.
Aubrey Suter.
Krista McDermott, Sustainability Board Member.
Bradley, Sustainability Board Member.
Kevin Baris, Sustainability Board Member.
Alison Case, Sustainability Board Member.
Chair, right?
Yes, taking the chair.
First, I just wanted to say thank you for serving. Thanks for coming tonight. With us, we're forward to this discussion. Thank you all. We have, I'm gonna sort of... A couple of slides. We do as a number of you may know. I actually... How... Pronouns.
She/her.
He/him.
She/her. She/her. She/her.
You know that this is a...
He/him.
Um, she. She/her. She/her.
One of the things we didn't want to say. Say how long you've been on your perspective. Josh, this is a complicated one for you, but how, how long you been on the council? Sustainability Advisory Board were, both were the city government.
Two, three and a half years. Three and a half years. I'll hit two years in June. I've been here for about 18 months.
I've been a resident of Louisville for about 30 years, and I've been on City Council for about 30 years.
This is my sixth year on council.
I'm taking five months on council, and I was on the board for almost 20 years.
Nomated seven months.
I've been on council two years before that. I was on, been a commission.
Can you introduce me? One.
Five and a half on council. Before that, I was on the State Preservation Division. And 45 years being... I'm just joining the board.
Can you bring it? Thanks. I did as well. I did a stint on the library board. For a while. Yeah. Also, besides my hairbrush.
Okay.
This is also my second year on the board.
I'll go back to this for a second. We, what we decided to do a couple of years ago, well, and really operationalized last year is to make sure that these... Advisory Board. The, uh... What you all are doing. Talking a little bit about our work plan. Sustainability Advisory Board files their priorities on this. Discussion and correction. Council, which is why this is special. Can't give direction in study sessions or just regular meetings. So what we're gonna do tonight is we... City manager, Sam, to go through the rest of the slides. Take some other comments. Some of the things.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll take over. First, I'm the city clerk's office, interim city deputy city manager, Mary Drew, who actually helped put these slides together. You have the B team tonight. She was supposed to be presenting this, but she is out on vacation. On the, well, maybe not.
Yeah, one.
No, she's out celebrating birthdays, so we're happy for her. We wanted to start each of these meetings with our advisory board, just to touch base on the roles, right? Where are they, where are they codified? So this board is in our code as an advisory board in character. And then there's a resolution that talks a little bit about the role, including... Advising on matters related to resource conservation, recycling, practices for efficient resources, activities to raise awareness of, advocate for efficient use of resources within the city. Advisory responsibilities and other duties is assigned by council. When I saw this, I thought, well, I want to know a little bit more about this board, so I hope you don't mind. I'm gonna go off script for a minute. I'll use some of those rules that I found in the resolution, which is very helpful, just for me, put in some context. So this board comes from the Louisville Recycling Board that was created in 1988, which became the Louisville Resource Conservation Board in 1992. And 2010 became the Sustainability Advisory Board. So thanks for bearing with me as I went off script there to give just some of the background and explain some of the context behind what's in the resolution. We want to give a couple of updates to all the boards and commissions. Just a reminder that everyone is subject to the Open Records Act. All of our emails, our meetings, they're all publicly accessible, and all of the rules in our Home Rule Charter. All the boards and commissions follow the rules and procedure, which governs some of the meeting rules, as well as that expectation of sustainability and meeting requirements. And then we want to touch base on bylaws, because this was a project that we had planned on working on last year for all the boards and commissions. Just update those bylaws, make sure they're consistent. This is something that with all of our interim positions in the city, specifically with me pulling up the city clerk, the deputy city clerk position, and creating some interns in that area. We touched on this, so we are excited to restart this in 2025 and take a look at those bylaws again. With that, we also wanted to touch base on council's work plan. For 2025, council has four priorities in the work plan. Economic vitality, core services, speed, affordable housing. This board really comes in as there are two lenses. Equity, diversity, and inclusion, and environmental sustainability. And for me, an example of where these overlap is decarbonization efforts. So we have core services that we need to maintain around our HVAC in our buildings or our facilities. And those as we look through the lens of the environment sustainability. That is all I have really planned on finding on, just some of the background for this. I do want to give the board an opportunity of highlights of their accomplishments and their work.
Yes. So we have a few of our 2024 highlights, just to go back to last year. But before that, I want to take a moment to also express my gratitude for City Council. But before that, I want to take a moment to also express my gratitude for City Council, Louisville staff members, for not only being here, but for their leadership and commitment to sustainability. Your willingness to not only seek our input, but really go after it, especially in areas where sustainability is essential, is truly commendable, and I thank you all for that. A little bit about the board, just in my own words. I think as an advisory board, our role is to support and enhance the impactful work already being done by City Council. We kind of focus on identifying gaps in sustainability efforts, offering guidance on how to address those gaps, and finding opportunities to further integrate sustainable practices into city initiatives. Another way we kind of help with that is really strengthening communication and serving as a bridge to the community, trying to help promote, expand, and build upon the incredible work the city is already doing. So you'll see kind of some of our highlights from twenty twenty-four. We have Energy Smart, as I'm sure you all are aware. We have the Grade One, Two, Three Electrify campaign last year that really kind of helped people know what they can do to plan, purchase, and perfect kind of upgrades to their house, sustainability, things like that. Also had the Energy Efficiency Electrification Revates with Boulder County. That was really spearheaded by Hannah, Logan as well, and then Pace doing a lot of that effort as well. In addition to that, we really looked into the twenty twenty-one energy code. I know that was a big topic of interest last year. So we sent in memos, one in May of last year, and then another one we looked at at our January. We also have three new board members here as well, as you all have met, so always good to add new people. The ones who have left have obviously gone on to do amazing things, so always happy for that as well. And then we looked at really prioritizing work-life balance. So October is very busy with a lot of things. Obviously, we've got Ego Tober Fest in the past, so taking that off. And then this year, we're also looking at taking off June, since that is a big vacation as we know. So we obviously cover a lot of different topics and areas, but I would say we consistently consider how different projects align with Louisville's sustainability goals and how we can position the city as a leader in sustainability. So some of the areas that I think have overlapped with your work is really looking at that twenty twenty-four energy code. Obviously, energy use remains one of the largest sources of emissions. It's essential that we have those strong energy codes that make sure we're continued with our sustainability goals and address that. Comprehensive plan, another big area, topic of conversation in the past years. Obviously, in the wake of the devastating Marshall fires, we want to not just rebuild, but do so in a way that enhances sustainability and resilience for the future. Another way to do that is obviously housing, sustainable development, not only retrofits, but new builds, really making sure, again, we're achieving those sustainability goals and really focusing on getting there. And then lastly, always like to remain nimble. So any items that council specifically would like us to look at, we are happy to do from a sustainability point. Awesome. So a few other areas that we're working on that maybe don't match up exactly with the City Council's adopted plan. So the Climate Action Plan, so the RFP is gonna be, will be reviewing that, and then draft reviews, looking at those. We have the Dr. Cog Climate Pollution Reduction Grant that should be implemented throughout the next four months, so looking at that as well. And then the internal decarb plan as well. So the next slide kind of has a little more, I'll go into a little more detail on how I see LSAB contributing to those different areas. So for the Climate Action Plan, we'll be looking at the RFP, like I said, reviewing it, trying to assist the sustainability staff, Hannah and Logan, and reviewing other existing climate action plans, kind of trying to provide guidance key considerations we think they might want to look into, both for the development and implementation of the plan. Same type of thing for the internal decarb plan, kind of looking at how can we have community outreach strategies that really make people aware of this plan and really making sure they're engaged. I think we have so many great things at the city of Louisville, but not everybody is aware of them or is aware of how they can actively participate. So I think really looking at that. And then obviously with that Dr. Cog, we're kind of looking at what maybe project prioritization there should be, addressing challenges, potential unintended consequences, and identifying opportunities to leverage already existing sustainability efforts to really strengthen that grant. That is it for my little presentation.
At this point, we wanted to open up some opportunity for discussion between council and the board. And specifically ask, is there anything else the board should be considering with the council work plan from council's perspective? Does council have any guidance on the non-work plan items? And I'll say that the Climate Action Plan they referenced, sometimes called the Sustainability Plan, that's in your twenty twenty-six project, so there were some preparations for that twenty twenty-six, I know it's already budgeted. And then just some other important considerations to think about as we work through this. Are these items in the purview of the board and advisory to council in nature? And is this what council is looking for from this board? Is there something else that you'd like to ask or other direction?
Before we do that?
It looks like he dropped off.
Well, let's appreciate the presentation. That's helpful to know a bit about. I think maybe first we could then we can talk.
I have a comment, which is, and I don't know if anybody's said this, but I really appreciated the input on the energy code. I know we, I think ultimately we made it in a place that was a little different than what you were recommending, but like on something that complicated, having as many voices as possible was phenomenally helpful. So thank you all for your hard work. It was just extraordinary.
Yeah, I mean, I think just kind of opening comment. For me, I'm just thinking about how fortunate we are to have five people sitting in the room today, and more of you who volunteer their time to do this. So like, you know, gathering people to work on something is hard and getting really smart people to work really hard on a topic is, is extra hard. And even the current climate of national politics, environmental sustainability and decarbonization and things like that are, you know, still very, very important here in Louisville, and we haven't, as a council, changed any of our language or shied away from our initiatives around DEI or environmental sustainability. And so sort of like, in saying nothing, we've said a lot in that, like, we're, we're pushing forward, and your work is incredibly important in this year and next year and ongoing. I am, I'll be really curious, I think, kind of one of my, one of my questions or things for, for discussion is, you know, as things change, whether that's funding or otherwise, you know, what, how are we pivoting, or what are you guys maybe noticing, or certainly staff and all of you attuned to before, we are, you know, other, other challenges or funding going away, or programs that we are counting on not being there to support us? And what, you know, how that affects our work and how it affects your work? And so I don't know if there's, you know, happy to hear from anyone, you know, around, around that topic. I just think that, you know, two things. One, that really excited to keep pushing forward like normal and keep working on things that are so important to us as a community, and also understand we might have to react and pivot to what comes towards us in these next, in these next few years. So just kind of throw that out there.
Well, I don't have, I don't know enough about LSAB, but I know that it concerns me. I mean, we were talking at the last meeting about the COVID and the grant and everything, and I'm like, is that really, is that happening? So I think it's something just to keep in our minds. But I think, like so many people, and the work that they're doing across the country right now, we, and you kind of just have to forge ahead, right? Just keep doing what you're doing, and it's something, I don't know, I don't know. Hannah probably has a better answer for that, but I just, it's so hard to know in these times, because it's very uncertain.
Yeah, I try to maintain a forge ahead mindset as I move through this, until something is in concrete writing, as like this is being withdrawn, we're gonna keep moving forward, as this is as usual with the current funding, as we have secured. I will say, as a division, we do not have any federal funding that directly impacts our programming. The one is the Dr. Cog C-PER that is funded through the EPA, it's $200 million for the entire region. Right now, we're all moving forward, but that is a fifty-nine jurisdiction group, as if it's gonna happen, and until we hear otherwise, so we're gonna do it.
You can tell us a little bit more about that.
Yeah.
Be interesting to hear from our
Yeah, so it's a, it's a $200 million award from the EPA. What happened is there is, it was called the Priority Climate Action Plan, or PCAP, that was produced in response to a call for climate action plans that laid out all these different strategies of which the Dr. Cog region is interested in pursuing. A lot of that is large-scale decarbonization and workforce development in different areas, which will keep you all updated on, once we know more about where the funding plans and what those programs look like. And then how future funding trickles down to Louisville is going to be dependent on structures and eligibility. So again, you'll hear more as we work concrete information.
Thanks. So I'm the City Council's Postal Representative for Dr. Cog. So the board itself, it's the, the Dr. Cog entity, actually had a lot to do with this, and they wrote the, they wrote like the whole application and everything. And honestly, everyone should be so proud of the people who work at Dr. Cog, what they did to get this. This is more than any other state thought was this grant. It is specifically going to be targeted to assisting with decarbonization of like low-income and multifamily housing. This isn't really a project that's intended to address single-family homes in Louisville typically. They're looking at sixty percent AMI below as like a whole from the region to assist that, those kind of buildings. And as Hannah mentioned, it really well said, the workforce piece of this, I think it's almost fifty percent of the grant money is going to be going to education, proving people who are in the industry, because right now, like you spoke about the Marshall fire, that was one of the big things that came about, is coal-clamored air source heat pumps, and there's basically nobody who knew how to install them and, or at least install them properly. So that was something that in this, Dr. Cog heard really loud and clear, that Colorado has a lot of amazing people to add to the workforce. It's changing what they do, and it takes money to do that. So a lot of this money is gonna go into that. The idea being, you increase the people in this field, you expand the industry as a whole, and then it becomes more affordable. So rather than just giving people money to do something that's really expensive, make that something less expensive so that everybody benefits. And that's, that's the project. I'm not on the committee, but there is a representative from Lafayette who is on the dispersment committee specifically. They take, you know, input from everybody. And we just had somebody who like moved the position, and Nicole Smith from Boulder joined as well. So that'll do a lot to bring some of it as much as possible into our region. And so, you know, we'll, we'll see. It's gonna be, you know, a bit of a, a bit of a journey. Right now, I agree with you. They're forging ahead, the money's still planning to be there. It's actually still in the federal budget. It hasn't been lined out of doubt, which is really good, probably because it was not awarded this year or last. So Dr. Cog's still pretty hopeful that that funding isn't gonna disappear.
Hasn't it been dispersed to the state?
No.
It hasn't been.
No, this is, this is still in the really early planning phases. So once that happens, so the, the board got granted, so they basically say, this money is here for you, but now you show us what you need and how you're ready to place it.
One bit of background on that. There's a lot of concern, obviously, for federal funding. There's a lot of concern about the EDA. Survive. But there's, it's a, there's a question. But a lot of people, it's a lot of contracts, grants. That was in a couple of weeks, you know, it's three weeks ago with Goose, who his office is watching this very closely, the House leadership, and he's, and he represents us, and there's a lot of grants and a lot of climate work being done in this area. And what he said is that even though there are grants being canceled or not dispersed and other actions like that, what they have been very successful at doing among between the delegation from Colorado, the Russian delegation, and the agencies, and the further up the line is to make sure that I, you know, money that is essentially appropriated and already in the pipeline doesn't get lost, that it's been cumbered. And when that happens, they've had even where things have initially been like, no, you're not gonna get this money, that they've been able to go back and convince folks to release that. So I'm hoping that because this was the last year thing, that that will still prove true. It's, you know, a day-to-day question about that, but anyway, that's a little bit of background. To the extent that it doesn't come through or there are delays, it's one of the things that I know our staff is maintaining a pretty watchful eye on and talks. Talk with Sam and others, try to make sure that that information gets passed back to Congress, particularly because that kind of detail is very useful for him to know and for him to pass on, because sometimes it's not a matter of well, whether we're gonna get it or not, it's the delay, and when there are layoffs, permissions, things move slowly. And we need to know that so that we can pass that information. Just so you know, that, those are some of the background efforts that are going on, not just on staff, but council, but further up the line.
I can add to that. Attorney General Bill Wyser has already filed lawsuits regarding issues of the current administration. Things are being worked on, and just a slow, behind-the-scenes process.
Are there do you have any reaction to that, or thoughts, worries, concerns?
I mean, perhaps just a statement of support for the position of the city. I mean, obviously, I'm on the Sustainability Board because it's something I care about, but the thing that, you know, brought me here is that this is where it's really gonna matter, right? I mean, when you have more federal support, it kind of fills in the cracks. But it really, as we look ahead, kind of holding firm and implementing and going forward is, is where we're gonna make an impact. So I guess it's a thank you back to council for the priorities and underscore any parts.
Just the questions on the, on the board here. I think your input on comp plan is completely I think we all spend a lot of time thinking about sort of what's the most sustainable or energy-efficient way to have sort of particular building types that are allowed in any particular place. And this is our opportunity to think about, well, is that the right land use at all? Right? Like, is a strip mall the right thing here, or is a state residential the right thing here, or is high-density residential the right? Like, everything's on the table for comp plan and thinking through sustainability impacts of our land use choices. Since it's an area where probably you are, you seem suited to advise us, and I, I'm looking for that input. I don't know if you've seen sort of some I don't know if you've seen sort of some of the framework that's out there, but I think all of the choices or many of the choices involve adding significant housing units to Louisville and just sort of thinking through that. And I think there's often a sort of gut reaction of, well, more density, more density is environmental negative, right? So on. Well, it's much more complicated than that. There's an upside and downside and sort of think through that. I don't know what your capacity is and I don't want to like assign these or anything, but it, it might be interesting to consider whether you have input on utility master plan and just want to treat the plant expansion. You seem to have sustainability, sustainability issues. Sort of defer to our staff and process.
We add time to processes, adding boards to processes because Council's interested in that, that's certainly something you can look at.
Well, please, if you mentioned at the outset, it's getting sleepy in a matter of weeks. She's going to be needing. She's wanted that, we want her. So we have a chance to get, she's dying. All this. His favor of hiring her are fortunate together. So I, I'm looking back at, it's the, I'm 2025 priorities. I mean, I personally, I think those, I think there's plenty, there's plenty at risk there to look at the 2024 energy coming sooner than I thought, what, a few months from now, probably? So that'll be good because as you know, Council is, we're all kind of tired with dealing with 10 different versions of code and all that kind of stuff. I think it'll be nice to get, tease into that, and that is not going to be a small lift for any of us. So that will be really important to get here in the winter. I agree about comp plan and now is the time. We're going to have an update in May.
In May and our planning manager, who's the project manager for the comp plan, I believe comes to LSAD.
So I think that will be important to provide good input. As Council Heffner said, Council is always very serious about housing and, and formal housing, which is lacking. Some money was satisfied for that purpose, but people that felt first interested in helping us with that. We're a piece. And there are other developments that we approve. I wanted to, to shift if I could to the next slide because I had some, I guess some questions about this one.
That one?
Next slide. And this is a question maybe for all of you who know this one. What the plan priorities not included, some councils. I'm curious about that piece. We've talked a little bit about the Dr. Cog. Just interested maybe in hearing both Council perspective. Well, actually, hearing CP's perspective on why you put these forward, why if they're, if they're not within the
Of course. So obviously Hannah is working on the Climate Action Plan currently. It is a big undertaking, we are aware of that. And we know that they, her and Logan have been working very hard on it. However, obviously two people is a lot to work on something like this. So we've just been tasked with trying to find, you know, ways that they can continue to push forward sustainability and just looking at other ones, just to help pull research for them and just give it to them as kind of like an information gathering thing. And then obviously the internal decarb plan, we as a board have really been focused on decarb. And so just continually back through line of making sure we're kind of coming back to that same idea as well.
Yeah, I can expand on this. So we've been working on the RFP draft. We're going to release that later this year, considering the Climate Action Plan is implemented until 26.
When you say RFP draft, you really mean scope, correct?
It's a post-coach project. Exactly. So we I want to maintain that status. So looking at other nationwide examples of climate action plans and pulling pieces of those of what do we want to have in Louisville? And what should be included to make sure we're not missing anything? And then anything for actual decarbonization plans, just updates, seeing where we are, what's going on. Encourage status updates to Council as we're planning.
Can I ask a question to you, Mike? I was curious, is community decarbonization plan also on the list to help?
We have that MOU with Partners in Energy only going for a few more months. So we've actually largely finished a lot of the strategies in that plan. So it's kind of been on its tail end actually. So we've been trying to figure out what's the next steps of future community engagement outreach look like.
Chris, that's something we're asking you about.
So I, I was curious since there, like Deb and I kind of commiserated a little bit with the, the ECOtober was not going to be happening. Although I think the Earth Day Every Day is a really cool concept. I just don't want Louisville to not get credit for participating in it. So I was curious actually to kind of get some feedback or find out if that's something that you guys are working on between now and then to in like find a way to get that message or advise us or however this works to get more people involved and know about it since, you know, I think a lot of people show up for the ECOtober because you're driving by and it's Louisville. When it's in a whole nother city, it's how do we get you to understand to go there? Because you're talking about like getting people involved and understanding. And sometimes these big collaborative fun events are educational in a way that people don't realize it.
Definitely. Well, I, I mentioned a few. So when, so the reason like, as you know, we pivoted ECOtober Fest, Earth Day Every Day. And we try, we're trying to pull back and really focus on LSAD being advisory to Council in terms of the large policy items. So staff have really focused on the events this year. And we have been working with our collaborative staff team on whether or not ECOtober Fest is forward. And we're going to do a small piece of it. So we're going to do the holiday custom exchange. And we sent out a vendor form in our evening newsletter. And then we're working on materials for our board members to share for Earth Day Every Day. And then we also go have an LSAD table where Allison's leading an interactive activity. So we're really trying to bring those pieces together.
So pivoting to then as far as like more of the work would be about advising Council, which those kind of aren't. But maybe the decarb thing is, but yeah. If we're pivoting away from that and pivoting to advising us, I think kind of as Council member Heffner mentioned, I, I would be interested to get advice because it isn't just about decarbonization, right? It's about reducing water usage, things like, there's all kinds of different components, public transportation. Pieces like that play a huge role in helping us to figure out if there are legislative things that we can do. Or, you know, maybe it's changing the way that like water is, you pay for water. You know, maybe it's done not in a large minimum amount, but we encourage people to use less because we're encouraging people to change up things. Advice like that from you guys would, I think, to me be helpful coming to us. And because right now there's, there's nobody bringing anything other than decarbonizing, so stop burning gas. Okay, that message is out. That's great. Now what's the next piece? And I think I personally would love to like, like get advice on what's the next piece that you really feel as experts in and residents that we should be looking at?
I'm feeling on what Judy just said. I know that Sustainability Advisory Board has been very instrumental in getting people's information, getting people to realize how important it is to recycle and compost instead of putting everything in the trash. And decarbonizing their rebuilds. I mean, I got a lot of good information from you guys about, I rebuilt an all electric house with solar because a lot of what I'd learned from listening to you guys and but there are other things like Judy said with transportation, switching to electric vehicles or to bikes or walking. Getting that information out to everyone, I think is a really good thing that you could do or give us ideas on how to do it. Because, you know, you can, you know what people should be doing. But they need to learn what they should be doing. And that's, I think, is a big part of what you could do to help us.
Yeah, and I think our April meeting, I think we will be discussing silverback. So don't you worry, they're coming your way. Thank you.
So to start, so a follow up on something that Councilmember Houghner was emphasizing. So besides the comp plan, being on the work plan, coming out of the comp plan, the idea is to rewrite some of our development codes. So that's a major item on our work plan for this year. And so I would just, I would encourage you to pay attention to that in the same ways that you could advise about sustainability. Then you see in the comprehensive plan, you could also absolutely advise about sustainability in our developing codes. So I definitely want to point that out. Maybe in the previous slide, when you, one of the items is housing, sustainable development, maybe that's something that you already have in mind. More about that. I would also point out, you know, a couple of other things on the work, on the city council work plan. The park recreation, open space master plan process is kicking off. And again, I think there, especially in open space and parks, right? There's, there's quite a bit that could have to do with sustainability there. And then picking up on some of the last comments, the city we're trying to improve our communication with businesses in part through doing the website. So in there, like, I always felt when I was on the board that one of the biggest challenges was getting that information out to people that they wanted to get out. It's sort of if you have ideas about how the website could be better or just other things that the city can be doing to I think that would be valuable advice for us as well. Yes.
Um, yeah, piggyback on that a little bit, you know, with the, I think housing is one of those interesting, kind of, I'm sorry, I think you talked about a little bit where it's like, I think most people that are really interested in environmental sustainability tends to be a lot of overlap with, you know, caring about issues like affordable housing and is that. So I think there are some places that align really well. You know, transit oriented development is usually good for the environment and good for affordable housing, right? Less parking, less vehicles, it's good for the environment, better for affordable housing. So some things are quite aligned. And then some things can work against each other, right? Like really high building code, you know, environmental building code thresholds and low cost building don't often go hand in hand and right? So you get some conflict between one of the most environmentally sustainable building when you build it and an affordable building when you build it. And I think we all also understand, like, if it's built well, it'd be less expensive over time, things like that. And hope that, that, that discount makes it to the tenants or the owners of those spaces. But I, I say that kind of as precursors, as we're looking at these things, it would be really valuable to me. I don't expect the, the Environmental Sustainability Board to be like, yeah, you know, you should relax. Like you guys are going to be wanting us to pursue, I would think, you know, some of the most environmentally friendly codes we could possibly have. But if we're going to make any exceptions or allowances for specifically like affordable housing and things like that, I think it'd be really interesting to hear from all of you of like, what is the most important stuff? What is the least, like, where do you get, you know, sort of, that last 1% isn't the most, you know, being thoughtful about it without trying to pretend like, oh yeah, that doesn't matter. Like, it all matters. But I think we're going to have some hard choices to make potentially around that balance of affordable and environmentally friendly. And I think it'd be really valuable to hear from you all. A bit of repeating myself and I apologize, but where are those, where are those most, where those dollars are best spent? You know, the things paying for a buck on, on those, on those things and, and how we can work collaboratively. Because it's not that, it's not, it's not not caring about the environment, right? It's trying to, trying to weigh multiple things. So I think traditionally I felt like, okay, well, you'll say one thing, someone else will say another thing. And then my job is to take those two opinions and try to find some middle ground. But I was just thinking it might be, it might be nice for you guys to know that that's something we're dealing with. So to predict that and give some, some thoughts in that direction would be helpful.
I'd sort of, don't know that as well. One of the things, and this is a, this is a tension, but it's worth, I think, time, but at least a some words to it. I think in the election of 2023, one of the things that I heard people in the community maybe more than you might imagine was that we have gone too far in sustainability issues. I don't know if that's right. I didn't necessarily agree in the way that that was expressed to me, but there is sentiment out there. And I think, I mean, you saw it in a bigger way in the last national march. Discussion and contact. It's, I don't want to suggest that they're really on a par because it's not the same thing. But as the mayor Tim just said, we do, we are facing pressure and it's not just in the housing sector. It's, although that's the most, obviously it has to do with operation businesses and some new building that's going to happen commercially. You know, there's, we're trying to figure out a way to make sure the city is, and that people can find a place to live even if they're not a pathfinder. And sometimes it really is a tension and it's, I, I think, I don't want to understate that. I think, you know, one of the, I think that's reflected partly in some of the decisions we made on the energy code, which undoubtedly frustrated some of them. We were frustrated with people in Council too in different ways. And, and we really wrestled with a very, very complex issue. But I think it's really important for, for you all to keep that in mind. I, I, I don't think it is, it's sort of a interesting question about whether sustainability action weren't necessarily pushed for absolutely making the city a leader in everything. I, those candidates, it's just me. When I was campaigning, people did not want us to be leaders in every little area of life. And they wanted us to be ahead of the game, perhaps. But that's a tension that we're facing. And I just, like, sort of before we get out there, to put a name on it, because it is there. We hear it, we feel it, as I do. The others can, can speak to it too. it is there, we hear it, we feel it, as I do, the others can, can speak to it too, but it's, it's challenging to try to balance. And I'd be, you know, if there's, if there's feedback on that, it's very interesting to hear it, because it's probably frustrating to hear.
Add one thing, and I think you and the mayor both said it, but I'll, I'll say it too, which is, I, I mean, I, there is a lot of interest in sort of a broader notion of sustainability and making Louisville a place where people can come and live, and like anybody who's driven to the airport recently knows, development is getting pushed further and further and further east, because the places like Louisville and the sort of core front range are no longer places where people can afford to live, do business or whatever the case may be, and so trying to think of that broader notion of sustainability, are we just pushing development somewhere else if we make it tremendously difficult to do it here?
Definitely. I will say, so my day job is at USC, and we just had a webinar, obviously, they had two devastating fires, the Palisade fires and the Eden fires. I sent a little tidbit of a webinar to Hannah about this, the Marshall fire response was specifically called out in the webinar as an example of how you can continue to push sustainability while recovering from a fire. They are facing the same kind of thing, we understand that solving a problem is very difficult, it's easy to say just throw money at the problem, money helps a lot of things, but we know that that is just one factor. A big conversation on that webinar was how do we build back sustainably, you know, cement is even cement, that might hurt making more resilient, but obviously, creation of cement is not great for admissions, there's a lot of things that we understand you all are balancing. We're going to try and provide information on what we think, here are areas that we need to look at or prioritize, trying to find to, you know, if we have any additional research, like we know this, it will cut admissions this much, or, you know, this will be this thing for the buck, really trying to give you all that information, we know you have a lot more factors than maybe we're specifically looking at when we're addressing issues, and we understand that you'll respond that way. But I will say, I mean, to get called out like that on a webinar for being no leader, I think we've already, you guys have proven you're hard doing that, I think the cat's out of the bag at this point, which is great, and I think it's a, I thought it was very cool that that happened, just that it happened to be mentioned, it was just a, a question and somebody just immediately responded with that.
So maybe just on that topic, I would put forward that sustainability is such a broad notion, and there are so many things that you can kind of judiciously put to sculpt the picture, and in reaction to the comments that you made around people feeling that sustainability has gone too far, I think some very interesting things that you've come up from in today's conversation can help to shift that a little bit, right? We talked about the fact that with building, investments upfront may feel more expensive, but longer term, they're actually especially benefiting the people that you're seeking to benefit, those are the people that are going to pay the utility bills, and something that's now better insulated, right? Those are people that you're looking to take care of, we talked about jobs, right, and affordability for living in Louisville, and building out the green jobs, those are good jobs, those are high-paying jobs, they're jobs of the future to help people to continue to, you talked about communication, and communication, how do we do it better? How do we, we need to knit together those concepts, so sustainability, when people say we've really gone over sustainability, like, kind of what I hear in the back of my head is, we haven't done enough in explaining why sustainability addresses some of the problems that you're seeing right now, and you're thinking we're making trade-offs. So anyway, it's, it's not only a communication topic, it's kind of so many things in sustainability solve for more than one thing, and one of the things that I'm passionate about is decarbonization, but they solve for a lot of our other problems too, so just wanted to kind of knit together some of that.
That's, it's a good point, because part of, part of it is a communication thing. I guess what I'm encouraging is something that, you know, my job all the time is trying to anticipate what. And that's sometimes a pain to have to do that, but it's, I, I think you, you all are capable of probably solving. It's just something to keep, perhaps if not front and center, pretty close to the know that, you know, not everybody's going to jump on board all the time, and sometimes we need to push back ourselves on that point of view, we have and will. But anyway, I, I appreciate that response, because I think you're right, there's a lot of different angles to this, and there's a lot of solutions that are, that come of it, it's not just a cost center.
I mean, one of the exciting things about Dr. Cog is that it's going to help to streamline some of the differences in codes and differences in the patchwork of communities around, so I mean, I work for Schneider Electric, we're a big company that manufactures electrical equipment, some what, electrical equipment, and one of the biggest challenges is that different areas, whether it's different countries or different cities, have got different codes, and so how do we address that, right? How do you get a workforce that is certified in every different jurisdiction, right? These are all sustainability challenges that solve business problems.
I'm, I'm, I just want to build on Judy's comment about water, that's another sustainability issue that we need to deal with, and I'm encouraged by the idea that you can partner with other groups, the Open Space Advisory Board, or Parks and Rep, something about growing native plants and encouraging people to plant native plants in their yards that use less water and are more fire resistant because they're on during fire season, and I just saw something this morning that said that moss is better at collecting carbon than trees. I had never heard that before, but if you've got moss on your rocks, keep it there. So, but just getting all these information from different sources and then sharing it out.
I am mindful of the time. With moss comment, I think that's a good place, that may be a good place to end, I am going to have to, I'm going to have to rethink moss, honest to God. But anyway, I, I appreciate the thoughts, I think, you know, there's a lot that I think, I hope that you've gotten from us about things to be, thinking about some things that maybe you hadn't thought about including on. Some priority setting for you, because we recognize you're getting paid for this, in some ways you're providing free consulting, we recognize that that's true for a lot of our words and conditions, it's really sweet that we've got so many. Motivated people with such great ideas, helping us give us guidance. Is there anything else, staff, council?
I like our next steps.
Yes.
And I apologize, I will confirm the interim budget recommendations due dates, like, you know, like, she went to today, this is probably May, so I will confirm that, and we'll get back to you all, but some next steps for communications that we have pre-planned with boards and commissions, any recommendations you have on budget, recommendations you have on council work plan, according to our last year's schedule, we'll have those in May, that changes, we'll let everyone know, and then recommendations on legislative agenda to be heading to the 2026 legislative session, which is hard to think about today.
It's a good.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Are you standing?
I haven't had an opportunity to vote against it.
You could go against it.
Yeah, I want to stay here all night.
All right, well, you are the only one, I don't think the committee would say that. One, four, and two said that, council certainly. Thank you, guys.